All right, item 8.3. Maurice?
We're going to have Nancy Humphrey, our environmental programs analyst, make the presentation and we'll be here to answer questions.
Yeah.
All right.
Let me get the presentation up.
Can you keep your last package?
I don't think so.
I saw you looking down at me like, "Why don't you take my bag?"
All right. So, good evening. This is my first presentation for you. I want to tell you where we stand on plans for the changes to the Horton Overland Bicycle Boulevard, which, as you know, runs from 40th to 65th and is the major bicycle route north-south through Emeryville. It connects to the Bay Trail in Oakland. It connects to the Transit Center. And if the South Bay Front Bridge is built, it'll be the connector for that as well. What is Bike Boulevard? This has come up a few times. Bike Boulevard is part of the planning process for a walkable, bikable city. It was an element that was included in the city's general plan and in the pedestrian and bike plan, and it helps us to meet our climate action goals. The Bicycle Boulevard itself is a street that has been optimized for bicycle travel. So bicycles have priority on that street in terms of their comfort and their safety. And so the Bicycle Boulevard has signage, striping, pavement markings, other indicators that this is a bike-priority street. And as I say, it helps us to meet our climate action goals, reduce traffic congestion, improve air quality, more community involvement, engagement on the streets. So it is meant to discourage vehicle-through trips in favor of bicycles. There are guidelines for what makes a Bike Boulevard work, and those include volume thresholds or guidelines for how many vehicles a day make a Bike Boulevard comfortable for bicyclists of all different abilities. That guideline is 3,000, that Emeryville uses, 3,000 vehicle trips per day. And that number and the speed number, which is 22 miles an hour for 85% of the vehicles, those numbers were developed through study of case studies and other traffic studies that have been done. It was a pretty exhaustive process. There are steps outlined in the pedestrian and bike plan, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, that say how we address Bike Boulevards if they exceed these thresholds. And we know we exceed the threshold for volume, vehicles per day. We don't currently have data on speed. But anecdotally, people feel that there's a speed issue, and we will soon have data on that, whether or not there is. In the Bike Plan, it talks about levels of Bike Boulevards. Horton Street is, or Bike travel. Horton Street is a level three, mostly a level three Bike Boulevard. And since we're exceeding the volume targets, the B-PAC brought up, the B-PAC is the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. They brought up the idea of, "Let's take the next step to address, to take further design measures to address these levels of volume and speed on the street." And their recommendations were to install a level five, so we're at level three currently. They wanted, they recommended installing a level-five traffic diverter at Horton and Stanford that would keep traffic, direct it off Horton at Stanford in both directions, a level-five traffic diverter at 45th Street so that southbound traffic on Horton would turn left and exit Horton on 45th, and then a level-five traffic diverter at Sherwin so that northbound traffic on Horton would turn left on Sherwin and left on Hallack presumably, and then back onto Park. In addition to those, they recommended level four, three slash four, traffic calming measures on Horton Street between 45th Street and 53rd Street. That section, as you know, is going to be developed as Sherwin-Williams plans go through. And so conditions are unknown about what will happen in the future, and that was part of the discussion that we had. So we had two community meetings. We had a Saturday and a Tuesday community meeting to get people's opinions, the public's opinions, on what, how they felt about these proposals, B-PAC's proposals. There were, there were a lot of people there. We had good turnout and a lot of interest. And at the first of those two meetings, there was a show of hands requested to see what would sort of take the temperature of the room. Who was in favor of diverters? Who was in favor of calming? And at that show of hands on the Saturday, 24 people responded to the first question, which was, "Are you in favor of diverters?" And of those 24, 12 were in favor of them, nine were against them, and three needed more information in order to decide. At that same meeting, another question was asked, which was, "How many people are interested in traffic calming on the street?" And 16 of 17 respondents in that case said, "Yes, they were interested in traffic calming." The second meeting actually had a different character than the first, a little bit, little different members of the community came Saturday and Tuesday. There were more business community, and some different neighbors were at the two meetings. The comments in favor of the diverters included the idea that traffic volume is increasing and new development is planned. It is rational to take the strongest steps now to set the tone for the street. There were concerns that drivers ignore the stop signs at 45th and 53rd, and so if they couldn't go through, they couldn't do that. And the idea that it was efficient because the problem was seen to be great to address it fully in one step. Those were the key arguments, as of course doesn't include every comment made, key arguments for the people who were in favor of doing the diverters now. I want to back up and say that the diverters and the calming that B-PAC suggested were to be an experiment, so it would be temporary, and data would be collected, and then it would be evaluated again to see if we keep it in all these cases. People against diverters were saying that you were moving, we would be moving traffic from one neighborhood area to another neighborhood area, rather than from a neighborhood to a main-through street. And also that there would, there was a problem with possibly with large trucks making the turns necessary in the Park Avenue District if they were directed left at Sherwin. They stated that the Ped Bike Plan recommends stepwise means of addressing the problems rather than jumping. And also, on the flip side of the Sherwin-Williams, they said, "We don't know what conditions will be. Maybe there will be new traffic patterns. Maybe there'll be new driveways. We should not try and fix the problem until we know what the problem is." So those were, that's what we got from the, in general, from the community input. And so what staff is recommending, given all that, is that we install experimental traffic calming measures, that we collect data. We would leave the measures in, we anticipate for at least a year, but that would be part of the design process. We would get a consultant, and we have money, to get a consultant to design the calming measures, and we would get from them also a recommendation of how long they should stay in place in order to give us good data. Then at that point, we would, well, we would get a design, we would come back to City Council, say, "This is what our design is. Let you know." Then proceed on an experimental basis and collect data throughout. Just to show you what some possible traffic calming measures are, you'll hear these words bounced around. Chicanes are those essentially bulb-outs that make a meandering street, like Milvia in Berkeley has those. Speed lumps, as opposed to humps or bumps. Speed lumps can have a rounded or flat top, but they have tire cut for emergency equipment. They don't slow emergency equipment. That's one other idea. Center Island medians, by narrowing the roadway for the vehicle, they slow traffic down. Chokers are a way of, basically, only one car can pass through them at a time, so the cars have to approach and negotiate the choker. And pinch points similarly, they're just slightly different designs, but they also narrow down the roadway. Again, we don't know what, which of these would be proposed by a design consultant, but we would, of course, bring them back to you to let you know. What comes next? We're planning to collect data. In fact, starting this month, we're going to have two speed capture and feedback signs. Those ones, your speed, and tells you your speed on that section between 45th and 53rd. And we'll collect data starting this month and throughout the experiment, which is really good. This is more data than we have had. We will leave the experimental measures in place for at least a year and then readdress. Did we fix the problem? Did we address the problem? Is there a new problem with new development? What needs to happen next? So we would possibly put them in, if they worked out great, we might put those in permanently. We might adjust and do a higher level or a different level of response. And we do have, we have a grant from ACTC for design assistance, so we have the money to do the design. And the CIP has $20,000 of capital funds for the installation. We may need more than that. If we did, we would come back and let you know and ask. And then, looking further, further down the road, if we were going to put in permanent measures, that might be something that could be a condition on the Sherwin-Williams project, to put them in on the city's behalf. So that's my presentation. Either I or Maurice can take questions.
I just have a couple. So when you were talking about data, the data is what you're planning on collecting?
We're collecting vehicle counts and speeds.
Okay.
And it's by, we know the exact times as well, so.
Are you also collecting the amount of bikes that go down that street? Because I drive that street all the time, and I see bikes on that street, but I see, I believe more in Hollis, and I see a lot of people, bikes down San Pablo, too. So I think it'd be really interesting to see really where the bikes are at, because we have something and like to know that it's being used before we spend the money on this Bicycle Boulevard.
That's interesting. We don't have a plan, but we certainly can look into a plan on how to do that.
Wouldn't that make sense to?
Yeah, I like the idea.
Yeah. So that's, that's my thinking. And I think it's too early to do anything until you get that information, and also to see something from Sherwin-Williams as far as what they want to do. I think this is, this plan, if it has to work, actually, if I asked my neighbors, if said, "Hey, can we have traffic calming on 62nd Street?", I bet 17 out of 17 would say yes to it. So I mean, everybody wants traffic, you know, traffic calming. So I mean, but we have to be realistic. We also have businesses in this town that need to have business and need to have transportation here. But let's find out where the bikes are really at before we define this need.
Are you saying we could make San Pablo the Bike Boulevard?
I'm just saying, I'm, well, no, I'm just saying, if we have some money that we can swing up that way or swing to Hollis, it makes more sense to me.
And reduce car traffic on those streets.
Yeah. I mean, let's find out where the bikes are.
Mayor Asher, I have a question for you. We're collecting, we're collecting data, and we will be making decisions based on the data. I had asked at the public safety meeting, because along with the concern about the Bicycle Boulevard, there is a concern about what is the accident of history? And I don't hear you talking about, you know, measuring what the accidents are now on Horton Street from 40th to 62nd, 67th, against when you put in something. So can you tell me a little bit about that? Is that something that is not even considered in this whole mix?
No.
Did you get to the microphone, Nancy?
Yes, thank you. Accident rates are, were considered in this plan and in the development of the plan and the initial recommendations for the steps for the development of the Bicycle Boulevard. So they have been considered. They're not the driving factor. Safety in terms of crashes, they happen, but they're not common. And so the safety is not the driving factor. The driving factor here is the integrity of the Bike Boulevard and the importance of a Bike Boulevard and a Bike Transit System for us in our general plan, for the livability and for our climate action goals. So it's.
But are you saying to me, "We're ignoring accidents or the data that's connected with accidents"?
No, we're not ignoring it, but it isn't, it was built into the initial planning.
Right.
And, but it's, since it's not a big data point, we don't get a lot of data. We don't get a lot of crashes. It's not part of the planning.
Well, of course, you know, this is a small town, and our police department is very competent. They did a five-year survey of Horton Street, and most of the, there are very few accidents, no accidents at all between 45th Street and 53rd, and most of the, in fact, all of the vehicle bicycle accidents were right at the intersection of 40th and Horton. And I'm concerned not only about the Bicycle Boulevard, but also about the safety of our streets. So I'm a little taken aback when we're not at least incorporating this in the work that we're doing here.
If I could answer that, we would definitely take a look and report back if there were any accidents on Horton Street. But the need for this project, or the driving force behind this project, is to make Horton Street more comfortable for the cyclists. Right now, there's a perception that it's not safe because the cars are going so fast. And so.
Exactly. See, this is where the perception does not really, is not validated by the actual accident reports of the last five years.
Right, so the, I agree that there hasn't been a lot of accidents on Horton Street.
And we're talking about perception, not about actual accidents.
Right, so what we want to try to do is make Horton Street more desirable for cyclists so that they want to go and use Horton Street as the main route and hopefully stay off of Hollis Street. Because Hollis Street in our general plan is not designated as a bicycle route or, at all. So in fact, I think the way the general plan reads is we're supposed to divert people from Hollis onto Horton and try to encourage them to use Horton as the route. So, in fact, San Pablo as well. So we're trying to make Horton Street the desirable bike route, make it safer, make it slower for vehicles to drive on it, make it more comfortable for cyclists. That's what the intention is.
So we will measure, we will say, once we get these things in place, we will have another measure of the next five years of how many accidents there are.
Oh, yeah. We're constantly looking at accidents. We get Twitter's reports. We look at them all.
I just don't want to lose sight of that, because that's not perception. That's actual what happens on the street. That's all. Thank you very much for that.
Do you want to comment, Ruth?
I do want to comment. You know, the city had a very big experiment in the Triangle neighborhood around traffic calming. And I don't know any city that is as flexible with public funds as to spend $70,000 putting in something and then taking it out again when the public reacted. So I'm a little gun-shy about embarking on something where we put in temporary things and then there's reactions, and then things get changed later on and whatever. I mean, I think the Triangle people ultimately were happy with some things that got taken out and some of the measures that were made permanent. The Oakland neighbors are not happy with what happened in the Triangle, because the spillover is affecting them. But I guess, I don't have a yea or nay in general, just to say, I think when we start to spend money, let's not like spend money and then undo what we do. You know, we need to make a decision and then stick with it, whatever that, whatever that is. Because people will react and, so anyway, I just, it's just a cautionary thing about spending the public's money and then for something that ultimately doesn't have a broad enough consensus, so, about what we need to do or how we need to do it. I do like the idea of gathering bicycle counts on San Pablo, Hollis, and Horton, so we can see actually where the bulk of the riders are.
Right.
And if we are interested in making Horton appear more comfortable, well, it's like, if the heavy-duty bicyclists are not deterred by a lot of traffic, you know, we're going to find them on Hollis and San Pablo anyway. You know, and so, so are we gonna, are we trying to make Horton Street friendly for people learning how to ride a bike? Are we, you know, is this going to be a learning ground for folks? Is it going to be a commute corridor? It's, I don't really see it as a recreational riding place. I see the Bay Trail for recreational use. So again, the purpose, I'm just fuzzy about what the idea is here, because what we're trying to accomplish and how we're going to try and accomplish it. You know, I think, I think if someone wants to learn how to ride a bike, they're going to go someplace else. Heavy-duty commuters aren't going to go out of, two blocks out of their way. They're going to go down San Pablo Avenue because it's the most direct way to get to downtown Oakland. So who are we serving by having bicyclists go out of their way to use this friendly-looking street? I just, I don't, something, I'm not connecting the dots here.
Yeah. Mayor Asher, I have one other comment, and I'd like to say before we hear from the public. I was at both of those meetings, and indeed, there was support for the diverters at the first meeting, but at the second meeting, it began to appear that it was pitting neighborhood against neighborhood. The people to the west of Horton Street were very upset about a diverter that would dump a lot of traffic onto them, and the, you know, other people supported that. I think we have to be very, very careful before we pit one neighborhood against another neighborhood. And that kind of came out over the course of those meetings.
I have a couple of comments before we move on to the public comment. First of all, we're getting a grant for the design assistance, and so, and I also think that we need to spend this money. It's not something that, the word "experimental" is actually not really accurate. It doesn't capture what's going on here. This is a city that is rich with plans, and what is happening on Horton Street addresses several different plans. It addresses our climate action plan, the need to get people out of their cars. It addresses our Bike-Ped Plan, and also our general plan. And so all of these things are kind of overlaid in that area. When I, when I watch the meetings, what I'm, what I'm hearing from people, and folks are making good points, right? They don't want to pit neighbor against neighbor, and that's absolutely right. And staff, our staff is good. We can come up with a solution to this. This is not experimental. It happens a mile away in Berkeley, right? There are diverters. People know how to do this. They know how to change behavior. They know how to change traffic patterns. They know how to make places more bicycle-friendly. For me, I also think that in terms of trying to decide, you know, whether San Pablo or Hollis or Horton is the right venue for people to ride, that's also really misguided. I think people, we need to get more people on bikes, and the Bicycle Boulevard is supposed to be for all ages riding. And that means that that's kind of a floor, right? So it can accommodate everybody. You cannot, I cannot ride with my children on San Pablo, right? That is taking my life into my hands. I can ride down Horton, but still, at this point, the traffic is such that it's very difficult to do, right? I don't feel secure doing it. And I think that we have to build better bicycle infrastructure, right? We have, we have all of these plans to do it, and the fact is, is that more traffic is coming. Every time I talk to constituents, like, you know, first they'll say, "Oh, hi, how are you?" And they'll say, "I hate to talk about city business, but the traffic, right? This is one of the first things that people want to talk about." And we're adding more development and more cars. So to me, obviously, we're going to need a safer street on Horton, because what we do know is that more cars are coming, right? And we want people on bicycles. The other thing is that I, and I understand being gun-shy about the Triangle. And at the same time, what I can say, living there, is that what we have is good. It does some things to slow cars down, but we've really made a decision as a city, then, to have cars coming through, speeding from San Pablo over to Adeline around our senior citizens and the youngest children in our school district. And that's, you know, I understand that people were upset about the traffic calming. It takes time, right, to build up a culture around biking, around walking, around understanding your neighborhood as your kind of extension of your front yard. But I think we also lost some things there without looking at those, those further measures. And the other thing that this brings up for me is, you know, the B-PAC brought this recommendation for Horton Street. And, you know, to me, this, this sounds like actually the idea that we're talking about whether we go four or whether we go five. The question for me is, why wasn't four triggered long ago? And what are we doing to look at our other Bicycle Boulevards in town? Where are we on these things? I look at 45th Street, which is also a Bicycle Boulevard, and I know that there is a lot of traffic on that street. And what is our routine kind of monitoring? And do we have, we have all these wonderful kind of Olympic views of plans, right? But what are we doing in terms of maintenance and in terms of having a strategy in order to get there? So I'm, you know, I'm glad to see us looking at this, but it also, I think, kind of gives me some concerns and some questions about how will this work, not just on Horton Street, but in other places in town. With that, let's, let's take some public comment.
I'll save my comments for after.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer. Yeah, did you want to? Okay.
I have a lot of comments, so.
Okay. Yeah, come forward. Okay.
Hi, Diane Martinez, Triangle Neighborhood. I just wanted to let you know, I live in the Triangle neighborhood, and I commute to North Hollis. And because I'm a gonzo cyclist, I started on San Pablo, and that got tired very quickly. So I moved over to Hollis. I still feel like I'm going to die when I ride my bike on Hollis. So I go out of my way, and I go to our Bicycle Boulevard. And because I'm a little bit of a gonzo cyclist, I feel safe on Horton, but I want to continue to feel safe on Horton. And I am happy to go out of my way to go to this street, which is, you know, well-paved, well-lit, and comfortable for cyclists. And I hope it continues to be so.
Thank you.
Scott Donahue, 1420 45th Street. I'm on the B-PAC, and if you look at our Bike-Ped Plan, you will see accident statistics for pedestrians and bicyclists. And the key accidents for bicyclists, intersections have been San Pablo at 45th Street. And the biggest intersection for bicycle injuries has been the freeway off-ramp and the bike, the Bay Trail as it crosses the freeway off-ramp at Powell. We've done a little bit of work there. Caltrans cleaned it up a little bit. Hopefully, that's a little safer. But the other metric for pedestrians and cyclists for injury is the rate of automobile traffic. The higher the speed is. The higher the speed is just, the rate of injury is dramatically higher. At an average speed of 22, the accident rate is something like 5% of what it is at 45 miles an hour. There's no comparison, that it drops dramatically with the speed. And the idea of the Horton Street Bike Boulevard is to control speed, but also volume of vehicles. And cyclists really are using it. It's a regional through-street to get to West Oakland Bart and to get to the Mandela Bike Way, which loops past downtown for a lot of bicycles. It's quite heavily used, and we even have numbers for its use in the Bike Ped Plan. You can see that it is well-used right now. And if we improve this street, it will be even more used. And that's the idea. We want to encourage this to be even a better street. And if we just let more and more traffic go on it, let those FedEx trucks roll through there at a really high rate of speed, we could have some of the deaths we've had in town. We've had a death on San Pablo at, just across our, right onto our side of 36th Street. We've had one on Powell Street at, I guess it's Filejo there. And we just don't need this. This is something we can avoid by having a street that operates at a lower speed. And Level Four will give us a lower speed, and it might reduce some volume. And I think it's a test worth taking. It's not coming out of our general fund to do this test. I think we should try it. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Barber. I live at Emery Bay Village, and I'm a pretty new resident to Emeryville. First, I applaud the city and the council for trying to make our, this city more bike-friendly. So I'm standing up here, though, as a driver. I have clients all over the Bay Area. I drive a lot. I know a lot of different routes in Emeryville in a short period of time. The one thing I want to bring to your attention is if a, I hope I use the right terms here, traffic diversion method, or, but if there's an actual diverter, like taking traffic off of Horton and say, putting it onto Hollis, is one of the things that, well, I'll come straight to the point, is really looking at traffic light pacing, the signaling pacing. Because one of the first things I noticed, I've lived in San Francisco, I've lived all over the Bay Area, but I lived in Oakland before I moved here, is that I, the first thing I did is I drove down San Pablo and took a left from San Pablo onto 53rd. It took forever, and guess what? The light never changed.
Yeah, that's right.
Sorry about this, went right through the light. I just finally took the light. So if we divert traffic, and I know that that light.
Our traffic enforcement people didn't hear that.
Yeah, I know.
State highway.
But it is an Oakland, it is an Oakland light.
I know.
Blame Oakland.
Thank you for that. That's exactly where I was going. So my understanding is that Hollis and 40th, and 53rd, and San Pablo are both Oakland-maintained lights. But if we do traffic diver, I believe so.
Not Hollis and 40th.
Not Hollis and 40th. So we just have, I would encourage the city or whoever maintains that, if we do traffic diversions, unless you say there's more traffic on there, you're going to have increased frustration. And the result of that is people like me, who studiously avoid going through those lights. Actually, I actually have figured out all my efficient ways to get around the Bay. And I actually did put in an email, almost like a month after I moved here, sort of a strange thing to be immediately involving yourself and the city about your traffic lights. But I actually wrote in and said, because I was on the Emeryville side, and went, "Oh, I can put this email in here." Guess what? These lights, they just take really long. And I got, by the way, did get a call back like that. Incredibly impressive, how fast. But that's just a point to think about, like, what are we doing? How does that impact the drivers, and how can we make that better for them? Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tim Curran. I'm a Horton Street resident. I was at both meetings. And I came away from the meetings feeling as if the Public Works was trying to sandbag the whole idea of diverters. On the second meeting, there was a large flaw exposed in the plan, which would prevent Novartis from entering into one of the driveways. It shows that the plan wasn't even thought through. The language that Public Works has presented to the City Council in the memorandum seems to mention things like pitting neighbors against each other. And even the reason for embarking on this is to make the Bicycle Boulevard more bicycle-friendly. As I understand it, we have a general plan, which has a vehicle count, 3,000. 2010, it was close to 5,000. The same general plan says that traffic calming is expected to reduce a traffic volume by about 10 to 20%. If you do the math, traffic calming is going to reduce the traffic counts to within the general plan. It's not going to make it below 3,000. So you have to understand what you're going to do here. If you're just interested in some slowing down of traffic, perhaps it's a traffic calming. If you're interested in reducing the volume as the traffic, as the general plan asks for, then you're going to have to do the math and figure out that calming methods are probably not going to get you down below 3,000 specifically, especially considering that we're going to have the Sherwin-Williams development coming down the road. So it's a matter of focus and what the purpose is here. And I think the integrity of the Bicycle Boulevard needs to be the focus, and it needs to be reflected through staff, as they recommend to the City Council. Because I'm quite surprised that the public participation came out to be the recommendation that it was. I understand it, but it was quite a surprise. That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah.
I use Horton Street Bicycle Boulevard a lot. I'm kind of a wimp when it comes to, I love bicycling, but I do not want cars whizzing by me very close. And I would just urge you, I don't know what the solution is. I'm not sure about diversion versus calming, but I do know that for me, and a lot of my neighbors, we use it. There are kids using it. And so please honor the fact that this is a real asset for our community, and please do what's necessary to save Horton Street. Thank you.
Okay. On page 340, 434 in the packet here, this is from Maurice Kaufman, the Public Works Director. He says here, in the discussion, "A large majority of meeting attendees were in favor of experimenting with Level Four traffic calming measures at the two meetings held on Saturday and Tuesday, September 27th and 30th." So that's what the official record is. It's going to be forever ensconced as the official record. But as we just heard tonight, that that's not, we now know that's not true. We now know, as your employees told us, that the vote was taken, and the Level Five diverters won the vote. So we should change the, this should be changed, so the, for the record, it should, that should not be in the record. The large majority of meeting attendees were in favor. That should be expunged from the record. I don't know how you do that. But that should be done, because we shouldn't have untruths be in the official record. Okay. I think you should do Level Five, traffic calming. Now, there was some talk here tonight that the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan recommends proceeding stepwise, meaning don't skip levels. However, there's nothing in the plan that precludes that. We could skip levels if we want. There's nothing, we would still be okay with the Bike Ped Plan if we were to do that. So there's no reason why we can't do it if we want to. And we should do it, because as many speakers here indicated, we are way over 3,000 vehicle trips, and we're only going to be adding more. We know this. So if we, if we just do this Level Four traffic calming, it's going to be a case of justice delayed being justice denied. I think we should just save public money, because Ms. Atkins expressed concern about that. And we should just hit the problem where it exists, and that is with the volume. Now, the problem with the Level Four traffic calming is it doesn't speak to volume, traffic volume. It speaks to traffic speed primarily. And then one other piece of information that was not represented well here tonight by the employee, if you read the plan, there's only two options available for Level Four traffic calming. If you decide to do Level Four, you have two options, only two, and those are chicanes or chokers. Speed lumps have not, don't have anything to do with Level Four traffic calming or any of the other things that were talked about. Only chokers or chicanes. Now, chicanes, both lanes weave. It does a pretty good job of lowering traffic speeds, but it's been shown not to be effective hardly at all in reducing traffic volume. And remember, traffic volume is the problem. Chokers are much more effective at reducing traffic volume. When the volume goes up, what happens is it acts as a one-way bridge, and then it's, so it's essentially like an extra-long stop sign is what it is. So people have to go.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Hi, John Bouters. I attended both meetings as well that were held on Saturday and Tuesday. And I think there's a point that I want to thank Stephanie, because she covered most of my points, actually, related to the bigger picture. And I wanted to take us up even a step higher to a comment Councilman Brinkman made, which is, if you go to a meta-level, Emeryville has what we call a homes/jobs fit of 2.41. And that doesn't mean anything to most people, probably. What that means is that there are 2.41 jobs in Emeryville for every person who lives here. And what that means is that there are a large number of people who in-commute to Emeryville, even more so than the number of people who live here, because not everyone who lives here works here. And the reality of that is that in the East Bay, even given our good public transit system, many people still drive. I don't drive. I'm a public transit commuter. But I do walk Horton Street between Park Avenue and the Amtrak Station four times a day with my dog. And I can tell you that there are plenty of bicycles that do go down that road. There are delivery vehicles that need to go to Novartis and other places. And there are people who use the Amtrak Station, like myself, who come there. And I think that we need to look more holistically at the solution. We've built a community that brings people in to work here, and that's the reality we have. So we have to work within that reality. And when we talk about projects like this or specific issues, we need to stop looking at them in little microcosms, like Horton Street in a four-block area, and look at the comprehensive traffic problem, which to me, when you look out my window on 40th Street, and I did say this at the meeting we had, I see on a Saturday afternoon, the traffic, both lanes, all the way back Horton Street, or not Horton Street, 40th Street, across the bridge and past IKEA. And why those lights aren't synced, I don't quite understand myself. Could be a fiscal reason, could just be an oversight in prior planning. But if we're going to divert traffic in any way, we have to understand that people have a patience threshold. And if they're coming here to shop, or coming here to work, and they have places to go, the reality is they're already in their car. And although I would like people to ride on their bicycles more, too, be practical about it, and understand that people are in their car today. And that doesn't mean you placate them inausium, but you need to understand where people are, and then move them to a place where you want them to be. And I don't believe that putting diverters there does that for us. In fact, I actually find it ironic that the Bike Ped Committee would recommend the plan that they did. Because if you look at that plan, and it makes a circle away from the direction it's trying to send traffic, Horton Street and San Pablo, through a residential neighborhood where more people live than where it's currently passing, and then back at a perpendicular angle across the very Bike Ped, you know, Boulevard we're supposed to protect. So you're going to frustrate people's patience, put them into, you know, a cluster you-know-what, and then send them back across Horton Street to Hollis to wait at that light, which isn't timed for their benefit, further damaging and threatening the safety of the people you're trying to protect. So as a resident, I know there weren't very many residents who came to the first meeting, so all the questions about who voted what, or how many people said what, it was kind of a wash, in my opinion, mostly because there were little pieces of paper taped to the street signs.
Mr. Carpio?
Okay, I'm not going to say much about the pedestrian and the bicycle, but what I would like to see here in Emeryville is having the curb not so much as the right angle, because everybody busts wheel and tires constantly. And if you, all the modern car, when you damage a tire or a wheel, you have to buy four of them, because they don't match, especially the low-profile. And that gets to be very expensive, I know. My friend, he just spent $2,800 for a new set of wheel. Of course, I didn't advise him to buy a $50,000 Mercedes, but he does, and he can afford it. But some people just can't afford to bust a wheel and tires all the time, because the curb are so high and so sharp. And there is no indication at night, for instance, where you could recognize a high curb. If they were painted white and red in fluorescent, then you could avoid them. But if you don't see that well, or if it's dark and raining, you know, then you hit the curb. And be sure you have a flat tire or a bad wheel, and that's expensive. And the other thing, I have good news for you, is that I'm going to propose to have a new transportation device, which is going to be called Helios Tram. In other words, it's a suspended tram that is going to be powered by the sun, and is going to run all over town and connect directly to whoever wants to supply electricity. So this is something I'm going to present to the Transportation Department tomorrow afternoon at the MTC. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard? Jennifer, you had comments?
Yeah, I do. So I appreciate many of the comments that were raised, and also the public speakers who took the time to stay tonight to talk to this, and all the folks who came to the community meetings. I think it was really, I was only at the Tuesday one, but it was a good conversation. This is about implementation of plans that we already have in place. I want to say, let's get going. I think that Emeryville likes to talk about how we want to be bike-friendly, and we've put it into lots of our plans now with our sustainable transportation and other plans, general plan. But what we've done on my five years here is not good enough. We've decimated Bike Ped Paths that we had on the general plan books. We've been stalling on this for a long time. We do have some good news with improvements to Christie Avenue that are coming, and also improvements on the Bay Trail as well. Improvements going on right now in San Pablo. So we have some outside funding that's helped support. But I feel that we're not really putting projects in place, and maybe this is our time to start doing that. We still have a long way to go. I really, I was a person who supported the Level Five on the B-PAC, as we discussed it there, and I'll tell you why I did. My impression was that Level Four, well, actually, let me back up. My impression was that the engineering contract that we have been given a grant, $36,000, to go forward with, was not going to tell us the best way to do this. I remember distinctly staff saying, "We have to tell them what to design." And what I'm hearing tonight is different than that. And what I've been craving is some expert to say, "Oh, you want to reduce your volumes to 3,000? Here's what you're going to do," right? And make it simple and easy. And we could say, "Okay, great, thanks consultant," and we took care of that. But we've been struggling, the B-PAC struggled, with how do we get there? We're not, I'm not an expert on this. That's why we have studies and consultants who help us with it. So if tonight, what I'm hearing is that this engineering design can actually help construct a Level Four that's going to work and do have the goals that we have, I don't know why we didn't do this six months ago. So I'm a little confused by that. That's why I supported Level Five. One of the conversations was Level Four was a choker. I heard folks saying that doesn't seem safe to have cars going head-to-head, and I agree with that. And I was uncomfortable with asking for that. And so, to me, a diverter was clear. It was unambiguous for drivers. I know my way around Berkeley. Diverters all over the place. Drivers quickly become aware of that. And so, that's one reason that I supported Level Five. Then fast forward to the community meeting, I heard lots of concerns about the Level Five. I heard about the neighbors pitted against neighbors, which I think means that we've lost picture of the larger view, which is trying to reduce cars coming to Emeryville. And that's another big conversation I would like to continue to weigh in on, even when I'm off the council, because our climate action plan needs to discourage single occupancy vehicles in Emeryville. And I thought this would be a step in that direction. But people were interpreting it as more of a slight to their part of town, and that wasn't my intention at all. So I've come around, and I think that Level Four traffic calming makes a lot of sense as the logical next step. It will be safe. It would reduce speed. Hopefully, it would reduce volume. We don't really know. I do think that putting something in place that's, you know, an experimental, temporary, means that it's a low risk to try that. But we have to be... But we have to be confident and keep it there for a year, and let it see what happens. We can't just, I think, respond. And the Triangle Experience definitely influences my wariness to go with the Level 5 as well. I think that we need to consider additional steps after we've had that year and see if it makes sense. Did the volumes come down to 3,000? If they didn't, then we need to look at the next steps that's in the plan already. I would like the timing to work out so that the Sherwin-Williams project can implement a permanent solution as it comes to fruition. And so that's why we need to get going. Ultimately, and I think actually, speaking to John Bouders' concerns, I think that perhaps closing Horton at 40th, so that no cars can turn and go north on Horton at 40th, might make the most sense and protect the entire community, if that's what we decide to do with diverters down the line. I think Level 5 is more definitive, efficient, I think is what staff said as well, and I did have concerns about safety. But now, that chart that Nancy put up, which was very helpful, showing the different levels, it did include speed, vertical and horizontal traffic calming at Level 4. And I don't think we're limited to just two options, although I heard that tonight. And I, I hope that, and maybe you can tell me, will the engineers, these gurus, be able to tell us the best way to achieve this? That's what we're scrambling with, and it feels that nobody is getting, so I don't, I'm surprised to see staff putting in Level 3 traffic calming as a recommendation slash 4. I thought we were beyond that in this whole conversation. And I'd just like to see us, you know, having something in place as early as the spring of 2015, so that we can actually move forward. Collecting data as we go is brilliant, but we shouldn't collect data and then wait and talk about it again. I think we just need to try something. I think at one of the community meetings, someone said, "You have to try it and see what happens, because you can't actually know what those impacts will feel like." Same with the Triangle, perhaps. That's what had to happen. And I want us to be careful and thoughtful and do it well. But I want us to get going. Let's get going.
Anyone else with a comment?
I have a question, and I, I really don't know who to address it to. But as we move forward in this, I keep hearing that reducing speed on Horton is very, very important to the bicyclists. And I'm wondering, is there anywhere that there's objective data that says reducing volume of cars reduces speed? Because I look, I'm thinking about the Bay Trail and the Frontage Road. When there's a lot of cars on there, the speed is pretty well damped down. When there's a few cars on there, then it's like a Speedway. And the reason I ask this question is, clearly, we have a small town, small police force. We are not going to be able to police Horton Street 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So it's important to know, if you're reducing the volume, does that increase the speeds on Horton? Can we find objective data on that?
Yeah. Well, actually, the data suggests it actually goes the other way. So what we do is we reduce the speed through these traffic calming, and then drivers choose other routes because it slows down. They want the fastest route if they're through traffic. So rather than volume affecting speed, we're addressing speed, and that then leads to reductions in volume.
So, and you have data to prove that?
Yeah. And there's data behind each of the different types of measures, what effect they have on speed and what effect they have on volume. Yeah. So that's, that's all been studied. And this consultant, again, would apply all that, all that knowledge to this problem.
Thank you.
Ruth, did you have a question?
Yeah, it's just a comment about the speed and volume kind of issues. It's like, clearly, we're going to have more volume, because we're bringing more residents there. So, so I don't see how we're going to possibly, with any measure, I don't see how that's going to reduce volume, because we're going to have hundreds of more people living there.
It's supposed to reduce through traffic, though. So the folks, and this is to piggyback on what you were saying about the diverter at 40th and Horton, someone at the Saturday meeting, and I don't know this person's name, brought that up, too, right? To say, "Let's, let's put a diverter there." So people who are trying to, you know, get out of the shopping center, right, and maybe don't want to wait on 40th on a Saturday, right, are deciding to take Horton, right? And so if we're trying, knowing that we're going to have more cars on the street, I think we still want to mitigate people using that as just a thoroughfare to get around Hollis, to get around San Pablo.
Well, if you divert shopping traffic, then don't you divert local traffic?
Well, local, I mean, people in Berkeley know how to get to their houses if they live on a street with a diverter. They're, they're going to know, but I wouldn't go in front of their house necessarily, because the street's closed through traffic. I'm not going to go out of my way to get to a street that's closed. So I don't, I think shopping traffic is different than local traffic.
Uh huh. Yeah.
But you're right that volumes are going up. And so will traffic calming, a Level 4, bring down those volumes? It seems like, you know, from this conversation, no. It probably won't bring down the volumes to what we're hoping. But if it's the next logical step, let's do it and move on and see how it does it, so that we can solve the problem long-term.
I have the sense that we're not really clear. You know, we have these wonderful plans of the great world of bicycling and safe streets, but I don't think we're really clear on what we want to do here. And we're not recognizing what exists in this town now, that Horton Street, there's thousands of people who have jobs along Horton Street. And we're saying, "We're going to, we're going to make you guys all ride your bike here, or take a bus here." What, what are we doing economically? We're not addressing the wider parameters or the other factors that are coming in here. We're driven, you know, we're focused on the bicycling and the plan, and with good reason. It's a, it's a good thing. We want to move forward. But I, I don't think we're clear on what we're doing, and I would hesitate to move forward at this, at this time, till we get a clear perception of what we're doing.
I don't, I don't think we're trying to keep anyone from getting to any use on Horton Street. I think everyone will, even by car, have access to every business and every house on Horton Street. They'll know how to get to their driveway or their parking lot. I don't think that's the purpose here. The purpose is to make the bicycles feel safer on that street and to reduce the number of vehicles and the speeds of those vehicles to accomplish that. When I ride with my kids, I don't take them on San Pablo or Hollis for that reason. I ride on San Pablo by choice to get where I'm going quickly. It's, it's important to have kind of the lowest common denominator, where people can bicycle in town. And, you know, Doyle Street is a good street for bicyclists. I don't know what the vehicle counts are there, if we've done a recent study. You know, the council in its wisdom put together our Greenway, which is just swamped with bicycles, right? We're having problems with bicyclists not even, there's too many bicyclists. They're not careful about crossing the streets, et cetera, I hear about as well. So we know how, in some parts of town, to make it friendly, and I don't see why we would have a Bicycle Boulevard and not make every effort we could to make sure that bicycles are a priority in that area. That's our goal, I thought, because of all the plans that we've already approved and written with that goal.
So I think this discussion, Nancy, help us out here, to move forward with this study, are you asking us to give feedback about what they're supposed to design?
At this point, not. We just want to have approval that we're going to pursue Level 4 measures. And then what we need to do, this is the next step, is to negotiate a contract with the consultant that ACTC has hired to, to get them on board to design these measures for us in a way that we can build off those plans. Of course, there'd be steps where we'd come back to the BPAC and the City Council to get buy-off on what those temporary measures will be. And then, at that point, we would hopefully move forward administratively, because it'll, shouldn't be a $45,000 contract or more to move that forward. But if we could, at this point, just approve the concept of moving forward with Level 4 measures, we could move forward with the project.
Let's take a roll call vote, please.
And if not, like, we could table this till the next meeting.
Right.
I'd like to table it.
Oh, I'm okay with moving it with Level 4.
Do we have support to table it?
Do we want to go ahead and move forward with it? I'd like to move forward with it at this time.
Yeah, I would, too.
Let's go ahead.
Do the roll call.
Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brinkman?
No.
Councilmember Davis?
No. I'd like to see the incoming council have the ability to take a fresh look at this. So I'm voting no. I want to table it.
They're right here.
Councilmember West?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Yeah.
Mayor Asher?
Yes. Okay. Communications...